I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, where we stand in the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us tonight. I'll call the order of the meeting at 7:01. The next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes?
Yeah, we do have some personnel things that were added last moment and those are highlighted in yellow.
All right. Any other?
I'd like to make a recommendation to amend the agenda.
I'm sorry. Not used to the new mics. I'd like to make a recommendation to amend the agenda to allow public comments tonight in reference to some recent social media posts from this past week. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the amended items as mentioned by Dr. Parker and Shannon?
Don't move.
Do you have any questions or discussions? Do I have a second? I forgot to ask for the second first. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion to approve the amended agenda.
Do you have any questions or discussions? All in favor of approving the agenda items with the suggested amendments, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. So the next item on our agenda is public comments. And it looks like this evening we do have a couple people signed up to make comments. In accordance with our board policy, Board Policy 225, those who are speaking can address items listed on the agenda. They must be recognized by the presiding officer. They must provide their name, address, and group affiliation if and when appropriate. Your speaking time is limited to three minutes. All statements will be directed at the presiding officer and no person may address other board members and the board members also can't address those who are speaking. I do want to note that we do have a policy that says you can't talk to the board or present something to the board without seven days' notice, but because of the social media and because of the changes, we did allow or we did, as you just saw us, approve adding this to the agenda so that we're still adhering to our policy. So moving forward, we feel like we probably didn't make that really clear and define that policy, you have to kind of dig through the website. So we'll make that policy a little clearer in the future, but we felt like if anybody came this evening and wanted to speak, we wanted to give you that opportunity. So we'll start with the first person who signed up, Janet Smith. If she would come to the microphone here. I have your addresses, 1200 Sandstone Court, Greenfield, and you wish to speak on CRT.
Yes, thank you very much. I am Janet Smith from Cumberland. And although I have no children or grandchildren in the system, my daughter did graduate from Mount Vernon in 1988. I am a taxpayer and concerned about the education of our children who are the future leaders of our community and our country. On June 11th, I sent each board member an email asking you about your knowledge of the Critical Race Theory and 1619 Project being taught in the school system. I received no responses from anyone, so here I am at the meeting to ask you in person if you are aware of what is being taught in the school system here. I'm just concerned because the legislature did pass a law which was, is effective, July 1st, 2021, giving the school board responsibility for what is taught in the schools. And I have a copy of that here and I'm happy to pass that out to each of you after I finish here. The Critical Race Theory is being taught at Level Four at Hamilton Southeastern Schools, at Level Two at Washington Township Schools. Legislators that I have talked to have promised to pass a law next session that will outlaw it being taught in Indiana whatsoever, as already has been done in several states, including Texas and Florida. The CRT proposes that white supremacy and racial power lie at the root of our society's ills. In CRT, people are classified by groups with little or no distinction between individuals. If one group underachieves, it's the fault of the achievers. If one group is poor, it's the fault of the wealthy. The goal is not to foster unity or common ground, but to assign blame and ensure that people will be put into categories so that tensions between the groups can be inflamed and maintained. It is racist and Marxist in nature and not something our children should be subject to learning. I have been told by some parents in another system that the little pamphlets they pass out to the elementary school, used to be called Weekly Reader, but I don't know what they're called today, but anyway, that stuff in those pamphlets is not very good. And I don't know if you all are checking into that, but that's what I've been told. Also, comprehensive sexuality education is something that does not belong in the schools. I have one copy of the Seven Reasons to Reject CSE and I'm happy to leave it for you to share. It's quite lengthy, but the main point is that it's sponsored by the United Nations and it undermines parental rights and responsibility. There's a strong movement in the United States to eliminate the Judeo-Christian principles on which this country was founded and to destroy our history, including tearing down monuments of historical figures. This philosophy already controls most of our colleges and now they're going for the high schools and elementary schools. We must not let this happen. I would appreciate knowing if anyone is aware of what is or not, what is not being taught here at Mount Vernon, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Perfect timing.
I hope so. I timed it out.
Sure. Were you a teacher in your, when you, were you a teacher?
No.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Danita G. Wellert. She is, did I say your last name correctly? No, I'm sorry.
Neither first nor last, but that's okay. It happens all the time.
Okay, I'll let you pronounce it. Donetta.
You got it.
Sorry. And I have your addresses, 6503 West Riverside Drive and support for current work.
Yeah. So my name's Donetta G. Weller. I am a resident of McCordville. My daughter is a graduate of Mount Vernon High School in 2017, just graduated from IU Bloomington, continuing on with her masters. And, you know, I sent an email to all of you as well. And I'm here tonight to show appreciation. I'm disappointed in the Facebook post that I've read. We teach our kids not to cyberbully and what I saw on the internet that anybody can read is bullying also of adults. Attacking of Dr. Renee Aziz, who I've seen her work personally, I have researched it. Not to say I agree with everything. I don't agree with everything anyone does. But what I appreciate about what you're doing is the talk of equity. You know, there are so many things that children need to really be able to achieve the greatest things they can achieve. My kids are fortunate. They don't, there's not a lot they need. When we went virtual, I didn't need internet. We didn't need computers. I wish you wouldn't make me use the Chromebook because I can't figure it out. You know, so, but there are kids that need more. There were kids coming to my house to use our resources to get them where they needed to be. And what you're trying to do is really allow the children that need the items to achieve to have that information. And I appreciate that because I run a major hospital in this community and I deal every day with adults who don't have what they need to get to work or to achieve what they can achieve. And we are battling those same issues every day to try to help people. And I believe if we help them when they're younger, maybe we don't have as many adults that don't have what they need. So I praise you for bringing in Dr. Aziz. I ask that you continue that fight. Those fights are going to come with people pushing back. I didn't see anything about CRT in any of the discussion that she presented, but I will say too, we have to address the race issues and any other issues that come up because we have children of all kinds within our schools. So I'm really just here to say I support your work and happy to do whatever I can.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you taking the time to speak. Thanks to both of you. Do we have anybody that also wished to speak that didn't sign in? I give them the opportunity at this time? No? All right. Well, we appreciate those of you who took the time to come and give us your opinions. Item number six on the agenda is our reports. Dr. Parker?
Yes, and as is the fashion in the summer, especially the summer of 2021, a few folks like to get away. And I'm so happy to be able to report that our Director of Community Relations was able to take a vacation this week. And with that, she set me up very well to provide her good news report today. So I am doing that for Maria. And that is provided to you in your board packet, and she listed several things that would be nice to highlight, and I'm just going to take her lead. Some of the highlights were four videos were shared on social media featuring parent guardian tips to implement trust-based relational intervention tactics at home, and they were also added to the website. And those are great videos. If you haven't seen them, you'll enjoy them. Hancock County Promise awarded four kindergarten students from each county school a $500 scholarship. Congratulations to Wesley Perry. Wesley Perry from McCordville Elementary School is the Mount Vernon recipient. The Mount Vernon High School class of 2021 graduated on June the 11th and was awarded over $4 million in scholarships. Well, it says the MMP, but celebrated unified champions, oh, Mount Vernon Mini Marotta Preschool, forgive me, celebrated unified champions, and we do that in some other schools. Promoting inclusion, acceptance, respect, and human dignity for all students. Mount Vernon High School Athletics had a banner year. It was crazy how well those kids did. Overall, varsity sports won 77% of their contests across the board, with most sports facing a top 25-ranked schedule and 12 teams, 12 teams, winning their sectional championship. That's just crazy. The Mount Vernon Community School Corporation will be offering five free breakfasts and five free lunches each week for those 18 years or younger at Fortville Elementary School, beginning June the 14th. And that's not the Fortville Elementary School students, that's everybody that's going to be offered at Fortville Elementary School. That's where the distribution area will be. Mount Vernon High School seniors gave back to the committee on their senior workday, pulling weeds and painting on Mount Vernon's campus and spreading mulch at Landmark Park in Fortville and somewhere around here. In noteworthy media, Fox 59 and CBS 4 noted Hancock County is one of the best counties to raise a family in Indiana, referencing McCordville Elementary School and Mount Comfort Elementary School as top public schools. And so many more things for you guys to peruse in Maria's great news and all of the media connections that have been made. It goes on for at least three more pages about that. So that's Maria's good news report for the month.
Thank you. Item 6.2 on the agenda is recognition of our 2021 retirees.
If I could, please go to the other microphone.
Yes.
I am delighted to recognize our retirees this year. And some were able to come tonight. You know, it's tough getting out about this time and some have moved on to retirement. So they're not with us this evening, but they're doing great things during their well-earned retirement. And it looks like we have the names on the overhead. And for those that are here, and I saw several, when I call your name, I'm going to ask you to come up. Now, one of the things that Mount Vernon provides for our retirees is a beautiful clock with an engraved nameplate. I want to show that to you real quickly. So this is what our retirees will be receiving as a thank you so much for their efforts and they can look back at this and find that the time that they spent at Mount Vernon Schools was time well spent serving our students and staff and colleagues alike. So we're just so proud of our retirees. Now, I'm not taking them all out of the box. This is just the one you get to see, okay? But when I call your name, if you could come up, and Gwen, could you make sure I get the right clock to the right person? She's the one that really does all the work. I just get the opportunity to share the celebration.
I think we walked this right great.
Yeah. So to start with, I would like to ask Patty Bennett, a high school teacher, to come up. Come on up, Patty. Patty spent 20 years teaching at Center Grove High School. What did I say? Oh, my God. You know, I've been here for two and a half years and I've yet to do that once, but I was talking to my wife, who still works at Center Grove, earlier today. So, and quite frankly, we're glad that you're here and not at Center Grove. We really appreciate it. So forgive me, Patty. Wow, that just rolled right off. I did spend almost 30 years there, so. So congratulations for your retirement. We're so happy for you and all the work that you did teaching our students and working together with everyone. And we will, I'm going to let her present that to you. Everybody, Patty Bennett.
Do you mind if I say some words?
I did write a little speech. No, just some words. I just want to let you know some things that you might not know about me, the board and Dr. Parker. Did you know that I coached cheerleading in Illinois? I coached the state champion titles in 1988 and 1989 for the freshman level, JV level, and varsity level. I also sponsored the first freshman class to win homecoming class competition at Bowling Brook High School. At Bowling Brook, it was a really big thing. The secretaries would always write down what the competition was and what place we came in. And the freshmen that I sponsored came in first place and we were so proud of it. I taught honors Algebra II for several years at Mount Vernon. Every year, 100% of my students passed the I step, which is or was, depending on, you know, what the state says at this time, a high school requirement. But they should have. I was honored to be able to teach the honors students and watch them grow and develop. It was truly an honor. They were great, great kids. In 2015 was my first year that I taught AP Statistics. I had to teach the course from July to December, but guess when the AP test was? May. So the class average was 1.385 and the global average was 2.8. Not really good showing. But in 2016, a year later, I was able to teach, thank you to Mr. Campbell, I was able to teach the entire year, seeing the students every other day and preparing in between. The class average soared to 3.6. That was 2.215 points increase. That was 160% increase in one year. The global average was 2.88. Then again, in 2017, the scheduling of my class changed back to a semester, but it was second semester, not first, and the class average was 2.714. Global average was 2.72. So what I noticed is I had to change some things because I didn't have that year. So in 2018, again, second semester, the class average went to 3.294. The global average was 2.88. And then the last year I taught it, in 2019, I had an average of 3.63. Average was 2.87 for global. 95% of my students that year got a three or higher. Excluding my first year of teaching AP Stats, which I like to forget about, 75% of my students received a three or higher. Very proud of that. Again, those were good students and those, and some of them were really smart students and they could have passed with or without my guidance, but there was just a few. And I want you to remember, a team can have great athletes, but if not for a dedicated coach, that team will never achieve a title. And if not for a dedicated AP teacher, the class will never reach a positive level achieving score of three or higher and grow in both confidence and self-esteem for each student. The AP classes are good students taking college-level courses, seeking a higher level of learning. And just like a coach who takes those good athletes and makes it possible for them to become a great team, so do AP teachers like Sarah Terrell, Troy Guthrie, Trish Loughlin, and many other AP teachers at Mount Vernon High School. They go above and beyond making those good learners into great learners. They dedicate their time and energy way above the call of duty to make a great learning environment in their classes. So I want you to keep that in mind for all AP teachers. They really try hard. And I also want you to know, thank you to the Education Foundation. In my 20 years here at Mount Vernon, I had 27 thank teachers because they know I care. And I want to thank you.
Thanks, Patty. Next, with 22 years of experience from McCordville Elementary School, Kim Codell. Is Kim here? All of our folks were recognized at a year-end celebration, so those that were still employed, some retired during the year. I did see Carrie Cole from the middle school. Carrie, come on up. Anybody want to guess how many years Carrie has in Mount Vernon Schools? 41 years. Congratulations to Carrie Cole.
Thank you so much. I was just going to say, hey, it was a total pleasure being a part of Mount Vernon. I don't need that thing.
Okay.
41 years, it really was, I wouldn't say anything.
I need new batteries.
Thank you to all of you. I've gotten to know you pretty well for the most part and just feel very blessed to be a part of Mount Vernon.
From Mount Vernon High School, Cindy Conover here. Cindy? Cindy had 17 years. Pam DeBarn from this building, she's not here, had 23 years. Brenda Denny from the pre-K. I don't remember seeing Brenda. Brenda, sorry, Carrie, she beat you by a year at 42. Lola, I saw Lola. Where's Lola? Lola, hold her in. Come on up, Lola. Lola from Fortville Elementary School served our district for 25 years. Congratulations, Lola. And I will tell you, Lola's excited about this clock. She already told me about it a week or two ago.
Did you want to say anything or two?
Lola, grab the microphone, I promise.
I did not have anything prepared because I didn't know I was allowed to. I'm usually not hard up on words, but thank you. I have a lot of memories in this exact room. This used to be upstairs recess. We were overcrowded before we switched to, before we divided to McCordville, so half of these were classrooms. Boy, this sure looks a whole lot better than it used to when we had recess up here. And as I was telling Pastor Phil, back there in that creepy room used to be mice. But thank you for taking them away.
Well, you can go back and check if you would like. Just, okay. Congratulations. And Lola's going to come back and sub. And she actually means it because she's already signed up. Next, from the high school, Melinda Jackson served us for 35 years. Melinda, you want us to meet you halfway? Come on, Gwen. Gwen will help take that to your seat. Would you like to say a couple of words?
Not only did I work here, I also graduated from here. I graduated in 1973. Didn't think I'd ever come back, you know? It's been an honor to work here. I've met a lot of nice people. I have a lot of nice friends and a lot of good memories. And I told my son, he goes, when he found out I was coming back to do my lockers, he goes, are you crazy? I said, nah. I said, I just want to see the people again. I said, I don't miss the work, but I sure miss the people.
Congratulations. Thank you so much, Melinda. From Transportation Department, Becky Saitsmas. Becky here? 31 and a half years and I didn't see Greg Warland either. You don't see him because he's really tall. Yeah, he retired before the end of the year. Fortville Elementary School custodian at 18 years. One more round of applause for all of our retirees from Mount Vernon. Thank you so much.
Item 6.3 on our agenda is School Board Scholars and Academic Wall of Fame. Dr. Parker?
This is crazy exciting. And in pre-pandemic years, when we were able to bring more people to this room, and this was just two years ago, this room would be packed elbow to elbow with kids and their parents to celebrate their academic progress and success this year. And we have several names that are going into the minutes and all of them are listed in the attachments on this agenda item from elementary, middle, and high school. And to be a School Board Scholar, you have to have all As or A pluses on everything for an entire year. Now, that's a pretty neat feat in itself and that, I believe, is not even, A minuses won't even count. Is that right? It has to be As or A pluses. So we have some kids who are absolutely rock stars and we're so appreciative of their great work and those will go into our minutes. I will tell you, there are a few who have earned five or more times, five or more times, that they've earned the honor of School Board Scholars. So six is Catherine Gowries or Gowries, sorry. Nolan Gorankowski at five. Shiloh McFarlane at nine, nine years. Samuel McWilliams, five. Seth Morrison, seven. Sophie Mott, eight. Tyler Strands, five. And Olivia Yaley, forgive me. Thank you. Yaley, nine. Nine years. That is amazing. So congratulations to those kids. And they are all receiving a special award that Gwen is going to be sending to them since we weren't able to bring them all in person. Now, there are a few others that I want to read that will go on our Academic Wall of Fame as well, inductees to our Academic Hall of Fame. From Fortville Elementary School Spelling Bee Champion, Reese Lemon. Is it Reese? Resi? Okay, I went the long E. I should have tried the other one. T-Race addition, T-Race Champion, Nicholas Gasiorek. And Resi Lemon also was the multiplication T-Race Champion. Now, Comfort Elementary School Eden Coleman was the Spelling Bee Champ. Drew Morgan, addition T-Race Champ. And Eden Coleman, again, the multiplication T-Race Champ. So we've got some spellers who can actually multiply too. That's always nice. McCordville Elementary School Deanna Bertelson, Spelling Bee Champion. Addition T-Race Champion was Xavier Stewart. And Brynlee Sargent was the multiplication T-Race Champion. Mount Vernon Middle School Spelling Bee Champion was Emma Gale. And of course, we've introduced our valedictorian and salutatorian. Mr. Dodd, I was supposed to meet with you today and my job was to have you help me, say it again. Thank you. James Demercy Oslo was our valedictorian. And Olivia Yaley with an E. Yay with an E. Okay. Delightful young lady. She served actually on our Mount Vernon Community Champions Advisory Board. We really enjoyed getting to know Olivia. So congratulations to all of those students and they will be on our Academic Wall of Fame. Very nice plaques, wood plaques down in the boardroom downstairs. Thanks.
Want me to keep rolling? I got another one.
Okay. Next, I would like to introduce Casey Dodd, our Mount Vernon High School principal for a spotlight on the high school. Mr. Dodd?
Yes, we actually had to go through a whole phonetic spelling of James's last name. We even came, brought him in. He coached us on how to pronounce it and everything. And I'm sorry to say, I still mispronounced it on Senior Honor Night, but I nailed it on graduation night. So it's my absolute honor that I get to shine a light on Mount Vernon High School. You know, twice a year, getting to do this is kind of a fun thing. And especially the fact that I get to now look at it, having gone through two years here at the high school, and I really get to look at it from more of a wider lens where I've seen what it looks like elementary, I've seen what it looks like at the middle school and then on to the high school. So it's just a really fun experience seeing what this whole process looks like. So just really, really thrilled that I get to share a couple things with you. You know, we've talked a lot this year about the challenges we faced all through this past year with the pandemic. And I really just want to focus on the And I really just want to focus on the celebrations tonight, and a little bit on what does it look like turning the page. But, some of the celebrations that we've had, right at the beginning of the year, this is one of the things I sent out, I put it on Facebook, and then I sent it out to my staff too, and I just thought it was kind of appropriate that, you know, the principal will be there for you from six feet away. My comment was that I really liked the shirt, I don't think I can pull the shorts off. Some of my staff said that they'd like to see me try it, I said, "No." But, just that idea that trying to be out there and be as supportive as I possibly could, you know, obviously, we all face challenges, every single one of us in this room, we faced challenges through this past year. But, what our teachers experienced within the classroom, just cannot begin to really fathom how much I appreciate what they were able to put into it, because they reinvented their jobs, day in and day out. And you're going to see with some of the things that we're going to celebrate tonight, just how impressive that was. So first of all, academics is obviously going to be one of our big focus. You can see on our seal behind you, that arts, academics, and athletics are the two, or, I'm sorry, the three big areas that we kind of focus on. So with those academics, even though I could sit here and go through so many different things about the successes we had this year, one of the things that we'll highlight is our Health Sciences. This is a new program we brought online this year, where our kids, they were taking classes to get certifications to be a Certified Nurses Assistant. So as they were going through and taking these classes, getting high school credit, they were also getting college credit, and they were getting certifications, they were going down to Springhurst Nursing Home in Greenfield and working there in their internship hours and helping real patients. And then they turned around after they got their CNA, and we're actually getting paid for that as well. We're going to have some of the kids that are up here, go ahead and move into Health Sciences 2 next year, and be able to add on other certifications and continue to work down at Springhurst or in some other locations if they would like to. And I just can't tell you how excited I am about having that be a path for our kids, that they're able to do those kinds of things. Not to mention, and I need to go ahead and mention, that out of the 15 kids we had up there, 100% of them passed their certification exams this year. Next, FFA. So, besides just being an awesome program for a lot of our kids, we had our very first student that has gone through and has sought to be a state officer. Madison Carnes was able to go through, and it's a three-day process to be able to be voted in as a state officer, and she was able to be elected as the State Sentinel. So again, she's the first one from Mount Vernon High School. In all the years we've had an FFA program, she's the very first one we've ever had serve on this state board. She will serve in that role for the next year. She will actually live in a dormitory down at the FFA's home base, and will do community outreach programs throughout this next year. She'll actually take a gap year before she starts her college program. So, just very exciting, she's able to gain that kind of experience before she even hits the college world. Not to mention that one of our former teachers that we had here, Tammy Ketchins, used to be our, she was a biology teacher and FFA teacher, she's actually the Assistant Director, Assistant Executive Director of FFA, so it's kind of a reunion in some sorts. For the second year in a row, we were recognized by US Best News World, or US News and World Report as a best high school. So just very excited about that. That comes from our college and career readiness, and also comes from our AP scores. So, again, I'm very excited about that, because obviously it shows that our kids that are going to go on into the college world, those AP classes, and those advanced credit courses, that they are doing very, very well. But, I like highlighting these other things with FFA and also our CNA program, because it's not the only route that our kids can take. It's been a goal of mine since I really set foot into these hallways in every one of our buildings, that no matter what our kids want to excel in, that we're able to help provide for that. And seeing these kinds of things means that we're headed in the right direction. Not saying we can't improve in a few ways, but I love it that we're headed in that direction. And then, this is Kristen Gray, she's one of our math teachers, and I put this up there because you can see down in the front here, I think I've got a laser on here. You can see right here, this is an iPad that she has set up. Of course, I would do that. All right, let me back up. There we go. So you can see from this, I'm ruining it because I already told you, I was going to call you out tonight, but... But with this, you can see, this is a great example of what you saw in classrooms, where teachers were figuring out whatever they could do to reach their kids. Here she was setting up an iPad in the front of her room, and she was having it show what she was doing up on the board, and she was using a document camera that you can see just down here in the bottom corner, so that no matter if the kids were sitting in her class, they could see what was going on on the board, or if those kids were sitting in their homes, they were also able to see what was going on in their class, and she could communicate with them. I was in her room at least eight times this year. And every time that I was in there, she was communicating with those kids that were online too, because they were listening to the same thing, and she was able to talk to them and make sure that they were following along with what was going on. If they had questions, she could address those. So, like I mentioned, having to reinvent what you do as a teacher, that's a great example of what it looks like. Graduation, as far as academics go, about a week ago, week and a half ago, we had a wonderful night. Couldn't have gotten any luckier with the weather. It was hot, but having a little bit of a breeze that night was great. And just a few statistics from that night, our graduation rate for this year was 99.69%. And we have a chance to be able to bump that up, depending on our one student that we are going to continue to work with in the fall, we may actually have 100% graduation rate this year. So, coming off of the kind of year that we just had, to have that kind of rate is a testament to our kids, it's a testament to our families, it's a testament to our teachers, and it's a testament to our counselors, that we're able to work with all of those kids to be able to have that kind of success. We had 284 seniors and 14 juniors that graduated this year, so 324 kids that walked across that stage. 97.99% of our students graduated with academic honors or Core 40, and then seven of our students graduated with technical honors, which means that not only did they graduate with an academic honors diploma, they also graduated with some kind of certification that went along with that. So, again, we'd love to see that number grow, but the fact that we are able to do that with our high school kids, just very impressive, in my opinion. This is my awe moment. So we did have a few kids that were graduating this year, that have some people that are either here in the room or near and dear to us. So you can see up here that Lexi Shelton did graduate this year, and this just goes to prove that we got a, we got a big softie over here, even though he tries to have just kind of a gruff exterior, which is made even more apparent right here, when you see the tears streaming down his face. Greg Rallo with his daughter, Marla. Getting to see her graduate this year, and again, just that smile on her face, the hug. And then, if I can get this to work. We do have Emma Muffler, so Stacy's daughter, that graduated this year as well. And even though we weren't able to get a picture of Stacy giving Emma a hug, we were able to get this picture. Aww. And, I mean, obviously then, more than just having a little bit of fun here, the other thing with this is, when you have kids that come through here, that, I mean, you've got Stacy here, this is the third generation of a child that's graduating from here, and you have Derek that graduated from here, his own daughter that's graduating, and then that kind of thing, where he's going over. And I didn't put the other pictures in here of some of the kids that he's coached for years and years and years, the Abby Worleys, kids like that, where he's going and giving them a hug, because those are his kids too. And I think that's an important thing about our community, is these are our kids. We see these kids year after year after year, we see the family members year after year after year, and that's what makes it special. Athletics, I won't talk a lot about it. Dr. Parker already kind of mentioned it. I don't know if any of you have gone over into the atrium and the main entrance to the gymnasium, but here's our hall for this year. And as Brandon put out there, how it started and how it finished, he put up the top that last year in the spring, we had to cancel our spring season. And then this year, we won every sectional that was available to us during that same season. And as you look at those numbers up there throughout this entire year, we've never had a year like this. And it's impressive, I mean, I'm a former varsity coach, I love sports, I do, but it goes deeper than that. It's more about what kind of dedication was there amongst our kids and our families and our coaches. The fact that we could have that kind of success through the kind of year that we've had, that's awesome. And the arts, we finally were able to return to some sense of normalcy as the year went on, and being able to experience all the cool things that we also get to do besides our athletics and our academics and everything, in that we actually had a, our color guard that went to state finals this year, and placed very highly. Not pictured up here was our indoor percussion group that finished third in the state. So them getting to have an actual season this year, and be able to perform at such a high level. Band concerts and choir concerts that we figured, were struggling trying to figure out how we were going to have those all year long. It looks a lot different, we were not in our auditorium, but we were in our gym and actually able to have a winter concert. Granted, it was at the beginning of February, and it was a little weird having Christmas music at the beginning of February, but we had a holiday concert, and it was awesome. We had two musicals this year. First of all, when we did Singin' in the Rain back in the fall, and you can't tell from this picture very well, but it's actually raining on stage right now. And I remember very vividly when Lindsay Davis, our theater director, came to me and said, "We're going to do Singin' in the Rain, we want it to rain on stage." I said, "What?" They walked through, did a plan that was able to do it, to where they were able to have all of that rain fall onto the stage, it went into a trough at the bottom of the stage, and where they were able to use subpumps, and a lot, a lot of wet vacs, to be able to get all that stuff off there, and made it work, even though I was nervous the entire time, wondering how much damage is this going to cause, and how much is it going to cost, and how much is Derek going to yell at me, and how much is Dr. Parker going to yell at me? But it worked out. This spring, we were able to have anesthesia, and two days before the performance, I got word from the health department that we would not have to wear masks during the performance, and you would not have been able to find a happier group of people. Like, I actually was in Shelbyville getting my COVID shot when I found out. This is about 7 o'clock at night. I drove from Shelbyville to the school to let them know, so I could tell them in person, and I thought they were going to come out of their skin, how excited they were about being able to do this. And that's in contrast to back in the fall, when we had to tell them that about two days before the performance, that they had to wear masks. So it was just a nice bookend for all of them to be able to kind of finish up that year. And then, we were able to host the Hancock County Art Show this year. And that was wonderful, that we were able to bring in so many people from across the county. We had a plan, we were able to bring all those people in safely, to be able to tour through our gym, to be able to observe all that. And, again, the kids that were, they had missed out on this opportunity last year, them being able to experience that this year and get that kind of recognition, it kind of filled in some missing pieces for some, and I feel badly for those that didn't get that opportunity last year, but it was nice for this year. And then turning the page on 2020 and 2021. You know, we've talked a lot about surviving this year, and how difficult it was and everything, and I'm really ready just to kind of turn that page on it. We can't forget it, because it'd be really easy to say, "I never want to think about that again." We shouldn't. And there's a couple different, you've all been around me long enough, you know that I'm a former English teacher, and you know I'm going to end up putting some quotes and different things from books up here. So, the very first thing is, this comes from a book that, it's actually an excellent audiobook. It is by Max Brooks, and it is called World War Z. It is much, much better than the movie, so if you've never read the book, please go out and get it, and I would highly recommend the audiobook. But the premise of it is that they go through this huge experience of having a zombie invasion across the entire world. Okay? So what can we actually learn from that? And there's, right at the end, there is a quote that somebody is going through, and they say, "There's a Zulu proverb that goes, 'One cannot cross a river without getting wet.'" And the whole idea of it is, that you can't go through an experience without having something, it changes you in some way. This experience is going to change us in some way, it already has. What are you going to take away from it? What are you going to remember after this is over with? And from the very beginning of all of this, I've always said, focus on the positives, how we've all pulled together, how we made it through this, that's what to take away from it. And don't let us go back into just that normal, everyday thing where we take some things for granted. And the second thing, we have an opportunity to kind of reset right now, because we kind of get to reinvent what school looks like next year, which is kind of exciting and it's kind of scary at the same time. Staying in the sci-fi realm of things, Octavia Butler, who is one of my favorite authors of all time, and she wrote a series of books, the very first one in that series was Parable of the Sower. And in that book, she goes through and writes several verses throughout it. And forgive me for reading this out loud, but it goes, "Purpose unifies us, it focuses our dreams, guides our plans, and strengthens our efforts. Purpose defines us, shapes us, and offers us greatness." We have a chance to reinvent how we do things right now, but we have to be very purposeful in how we're doing that. And we have to focus on what are we trying to accomplish? And I think that last week, when we all met as an entire group, and we started talking about some of those things, making sure that we're very intentional about those, and how we address all these things, while at the same time remembering what we learned over this course this past year. Man, we have a great opportunity for some powerful things to happen. Dr. Parker, I know I ran over my time, but thank you very much.
Thank you Casey, that was great. Item 6.5 on our agenda is the Mount Vernon Middle School Construction Update. Mr. Shelton?
I know you guys were presented with something that Greg had attached to the agenda. Those pictures were sent, I think, a couple weeks ago, weren't they Greg? Obviously, if you haven't been by there, we've got some walls up, so it's actually starting to look like something. They put the steel beams up and the roof, partial roof on last week. It's going to be a big job ahead of us in the next couple weeks to tie the new roof in with the existing roof, but we've got a lot of good people on hand. Matt McAllister from Hagerman is doing a great job being a foreman in that group. This week and next week, we've got a big task at hand, we have to punch out three holes in the north side wall in the cafeteria, to expand that cafeteria, some which would be out into the old hallway and into some of the choir and band area. And then we're going to take those old restrooms and kind of remodel them and reshape them, and they're the last set of restrooms in that building that have not been updated and ADA compliant, so it's really big for us. And we're moving them from outside the cafeteria to inside the cafeteria, which is going to be real big for supervision. But the project is coming along nicely. Dr. Parker and I talked today at our cabinet meeting about giving you guys an opportunity to come and see it. We were thinking probably more around the August time, so we can do that, and the welding room at the same time. That welding room should be finished towards the end of August in time for school to start. As of right now, the middle school project is still set to be complete, hopefully sometime at the end of September, which I'm extremely pleased about with the lead times on materials. Hagerman did a really good job of getting those ordered ahead of time before the delays really happened. So, we're really happy with where it is. We should see a lot of, a lot of work within the cafeteria and the music and, or the band and choir area. The art room, which is down the hallway, has really started to take shape, luckily for us. Mike allowed us to take a part of that and go ahead and start demoing it, so that we could get, our plan is to have that room ready for when school starts back up. And we needed a little bit of extra time, and Mike allowed us the time to move a teacher out of there. So we really anticipate, the kiln was, I think, put in last week. So that was a big project, because we couldn't really do anything else, because we couldn't frame the rest of the room in, because it was so big, we had to keep everything open to get it in there, then we could... and get it in there and then we could frame around it. So everything's looking great. We're happy with how it's going. We have had a couple of hiccups. We, as of right now, our irrigation system for our athletic fields is not hooked up. So everybody might have been disappointed with the rain on Friday. I was happy as can be because we needed it because it was starting to brown up and we were going to have to come up with some solutions. When the steel beams were put up and fabricated, we are going to have some issues with the ductwork and the HVAC, but we're working through that this week to probably cut some of that steel up and just change the directions that they're going to tie it all in together. But we're happy with the project is right now.
Some thanks. I think we're all looking forward to seeing those two spots in August. Yeah, that'd be great. Item 6.6 on the agenda is the first reading of policies. Dr. Parker?
Yeah, thank you. We've started moving our first reading into the report section of the agenda where it's most appropriate as it's not an action item. For policies to be approved, they need to be read at two separate board meetings and the board works on those digitally behind the scenes. The three that we are moving forward for a first reading are B-200 membership, E-100 adoption of curricular materials, and G-375, community use of school facilities. These are basically at the advice of our attorney. We are getting ready to receive a new packet where, for those of you new to the board, we will typically roll on about eight policies per board meeting for three or four months until we get them all wrapped up. And those are basically ones that come from the legislative session from the spring. So they give us their legal advice on our board policies and then we go to town reviewing them and reading them and then if you choose to adopt them at the second meeting. So these are presented for you tonight. Again, you can always continue to provide input through me and I think the tips that you've given us already are helping these to take very nice shape. And that's it for the first reading for those policies tonight.
Great. If you don't have the links to get to those, let one of us know because it is a great way we do it. You can just log in there and leave your comments. Perfect. Item seven on our agenda are consent agenda items. In our consent agenda items, it includes the regular session minutes from our May meeting, the claims, personnel report, overnight field trip requests, request to accept donations, there are none for that, construction claims. And we can do all of those in one motion if I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved by Shannon and seconded by Chad. Any questions or discussions? All in favor of approving the consent agenda items, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Had to see everybody, yeah. Item eight on our agenda, eight point one is the approval of the MOU regarding certified stipends. Mr. Smedley?
Yes, thank you. Tonight, we're asking your consideration and approval of the attached MOU between the Mount Vernon administration and the Mount Vernon Teachers Association that was mutually agreed upon back on June 8th. This MOU relates to issuing a one-time stipend of $750 to any teacher who qualifies for a full year of service during the most recent school year in order to compensate them for the extra duties that were placed upon them caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. A full year of service in this agreement is considered any teacher who worked at least 120 days during the 21, or during the 2020-21 school year. We were able to offer this one-time stipend due to some recent funding that we received through the Esere three dollars, which allowed us to redirect some costs from our ed fund to free up some money to be able to pay this stipend to our certified staff. So again, tonight, we're asking for your consideration and approval of this MOU.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the MOU regarding certified stipends?
I'd make a motion that we approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Phil, seconded by Tony. Any questions or discussions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Can I call a timeout, please?
Sure.
Two agenda items ago, you approved some folks that are here today for employment. You know, we may offer positions, but the board's the one that actually approves paying people to work in the position. So that's a really big deal. And Mr. Dodd, did you want to make any announcements tonight?
No, thanks so much for indulging me again this evening. We actually have two individuals that are joining our team over at the high school. One that's actually been there before, just kind of taking on a different role. Our wrestling coach, Chad Masters, is actually going to step down. He wanted to spend a little more time with his family, but thankfully, we're able to stay right within the Mount Vernon family. And welcome on Coach Randall Hayes that's going to be joining us. So if we could all just welcome him, I'd appreciate it. And then, new to our family, near and dear to my heart, just being a former member of the English department, both the middle school and the high school, is we had the opportunity to hire on a new English teacher this year. And please join me in welcoming Angela Coffin, who's going to join us at the high school and the English department next year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome to Mount Vernon. Well, if you're already here, you know, but you know. Okay, back to our agenda. Item eight point two on the agenda is the resolution, is Resolution 2021-21, Approval of Classified Stipends. Mr. Smedley?
Thank you. Yeah, again, tonight, we're again, once again, asking for consideration and approval of Resolution 2021-21 presented in your board packet. This resolution grants the district permission to issue a one-time stipend of $750 to any classified staff member or administrative staff member who qualified for a full year of service during the most recent school year in order to compensate them for their extra duties that were placed upon them due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Again, a full year of service in this resolution is also applicable to any classified staff member or administrative employee who worked at least 120 days during the most recent school year. Again, these, these dollars would be paid for primarily out of our operations fund cash balance.
All right. Do I have a motion for approval?
I move to approve Resolution 2021-21 as presented.
Do I have a second? I'll second. It's been moved by Tony, seconded by Shannon. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. I'm really glad that we could do that for our certified and classified staff. That's great. Thank you for your work on that. Item eight point three, Approval of Student Textbooks and Fees for the 21-22 School Year. Dr. Parker?
Yeah, I'm covering for our curriculum director, Scott Shipley, as he is on university campus for required coursework. And at times, that level of coursework, we're required to be on campus for some time in the summer. So he's there a little bit this week. So I volunteered to pinch hit for him tonight. Mr. Rallo, I don't know if you have the access, quick access, but if you want to pull up the high school one first, I would appreciate it. The first announcement I would like to make, and this is a pretty big deal, we have been able, work really hard and sharpen our pencil and use grant money essentially to remove the edmentum fee from all of our student course, hello, course and textbook fees. So I will be providing information for Mr. Shipley that reflects a $30.50 decrease for all students. Now, for parents that have multiple students, that's $30.50, yeah, Sloughwood's already happy about that. $30.50 per child. So, you know, if you have three, that's $91.50.
Did you plan for these graduate?
No. But thanks for playing. The other thing we want to share is there are some other reductions, such as we provided cloth masks to students last year and that's being removed from their fees. And Naviance, which is, the high school is switching to a different tracking software for graduation pathways and the like. So that in itself will remove $45.89 from high school textbook fees. And as you can see, these items, and the high school's a, I'm starting with the most difficult school first, and that is because course fees are determined based on the courses that students take. And in the high school, the variance is just enormous. So you can take several classes and that would be much more expensive than perhaps if children chose other courses. I would point out that the yellow column shares the differences from the previous year. And as you know, the board approved new language arts support materials and textbooks, so that's all an increase. So you can scan through that and read all of that. There is a bit of a synopsis for the high school. I don't know if you want to pull up the synopsis page, Mr. Rallo. I'll go ahead and start talking about that. And Mr. Shipley has basically put together a maximum and, oh, no, that's the middle Yeah, those are elective. I apologize. I was, I was talking middle school already. Well, to make a long story short, the differences for the high school students are all based on what courses they choose. And he did not provide a maximum and minimum because of the extensive number of courses that they, they, they take at the high school. But there are several that are reductions and most of the additions are for upper-level courses or the new English language arts adoption that we did in the secondary schools this year. Let's go ahead and move on to the middle school. I will share with you that the comparison between last school year and next school year is about $34.85 less for the base fees, and that's the core classes and the other materials, for sixth and seventh grade, and $20.88 lower for the eighth grade. And again, that's, those are primarily because of the grant fees covering the edmentum courses. The elective maximum in the middle school for sixth grade is $211.65, seventh grade $212.99, and $220.28 for the eighth grade. The minimum, based on what the students would choose for electives, would be $179.65 for sixth, $189.99 for seventh, and $193.28 for eighth grade. I will tell you, Indiana is, I believe, one of only four states where the state does not support textbook fees for students and that comes out of the parents' pockets. Personally, I think it's a great idea for the state to cover those because those are required materials to participate in school. And the free and reduced textbooks that we do provide, the state only provides a portion of that reimbursement of our cost. But we have great people managing that account and because, also because Mr. Elkins added some money to it so that we could purchase some new materials this year and even next year for our teachers and our students to use. We're excited about that. So elementary, elementary fees for 2021. And what we do in Mount Vernon is we basically charge K through five the same fee. And you can see what those fees are. They are $38.50 lower than they were last year for a, to the tune of $118.50 per student grades K through five in our elementary schools. And there's a decent chance that I could even answer a question or two if you had it. If not, I have phoned a friend. He's in Oakland City.
Do I have a motion to approve the student textbooks fees for the 21-22 school year as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved by Phil, seconded by Chad. Any questions or discussion?
I would just like to say, I really appreciate the work that went behind Chad and the cabinet on reducing the edmentum from the fees. I think that's much appreciated by our families and the conscious effort to make it affordable as we can for all of our employees.
I agree. I think, and listening to those concerns and then acting on it, I think that was, that was great. Any, I already asked that. All those in favor of approving the textbook fees as presented, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Item eight point four, I think we have about 13 items on our agenda tonight, so item eight point four, Certified Employee Handbook. Mr. Smedley?
Yep, we'll just keep plowing through all these.
Keep going.
The next one is changes and updates to the certified handbook for the upcoming school year. One-page summary was provided in your board packet, which outlines these highlighted changes in the certified handbook for the coming school year. And a majority of these changes are related to just providing greater clarity to what's already in the existing handbook for our classified staff for the corresponding school year. Tonight, again, just simply asking for your consideration and approval of these changes to the certified handbook.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the certified handbook?
I'll move to approve the certified handbook as presented.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
It's been moved by Shannon, seconded by Chad. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Item eight point five is the Certified Staff Handbook. Mr. Smedley?
So again, very similar exercise here to this board action item. We again provided a one-page summary to those changes to the certified handbook for the coming school year. Again, these updates were basically just updating staff directory in that handbook as well as updating some policy codes to relate, or to reflect the changes of those policy numbers that were approved previously since the last time the handbook was, was approved. So tonight, again, just asking for consideration and approval of these changes to the certified staff handbook.
Do I have a motion to approve the certified staff handbook changes?
I move that we approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Phil, seconded by Shannon. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. I'll reiterate what Shannon said. I appreciate the work on this. When you guys started this process, we didn't have a handbook, we didn't have our, what do they call it, our?
Scales.
Scales, there were no scales. So that was all just willy-nilly and we don't want anything to be willy-nilly. So I appreciate their work on getting that all unwilly-nillyed. There's not, you're right. Eight point six on our agenda, Transportation Fee Increase. Mr. Smedley?
Yes, this request was submitted for your approval by Mr. Eckert, our high school athletic director. He's recommending that the transportation fee that he charges for high school athletes increase from $40 to $50 for the coming school year. This, this request is due to the increased costs associated with transporting our athletes to and from away events. Mr. Eckert provided a detailed outline within your packet that shows the deficits that he's realized within the athletic department over the last six years at that current rate. So he's simply asking for a slight increase to that transportation fee, which does still keep our fee under what our neighboring school districts are charging their student athletes.
I was hoping you were going to say that, yeah. It's still well under that, yeah.
Yep. So again, just asking for your consideration and approval for this request.
Do I have a motion to approve the transportation fee increases as presented?
I move to approve a $50 student transportation fee for Mount Vernon High School Athletics as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Tony, seconded by Phil. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. I appreciate Brandon's work on that. He gave us a lot of detail and explanation on all of that. That was great. Item eight point seven, Approval of the 21-22 Lunch and Breakfast Prices. Mr. Elkins?
I'd ask for the board's consideration and approval, and approval of the meal prices as presented with a special note that we will be eligible and partaking in the continued federal child nutrition program, meaning that our student meals will be at no cost to our students. So I'd ask the board for approval to, we are, even though there's zero, we're required to adopt the prices for next year.
Yeah, I guess we could. Do I have a motion to approve the lunch and breakfast prices for 2020-21-22?
I'll gladly approve free.
Okay. That's our motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Chad, seconded by Shannon. Any question or discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Item eight point eight on our agenda, Approval of the Food to School Bids for the 21-22 School Year. Mr. Elkins?
Yes, so continuing with our food service actions tonight, I'd ask the board for their consideration and approval. consideration and approval of the contract with Food to Schools, which is the purchase, purchasing cooperative that we utilize for our commodities in the food service program. And then also the bids, the vendor bids that they collected and vetted and are having all members approve for this, for this next school year. So I'd ask for your approval of that bid package.
Do you have a motion to approve the food to school bids for the 2122 school year?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved by Phil, seconded by Chad. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Item eight point nine on the agenda, approval for cash boxes for all schools for the 2122 school year, Mr. Elkins.
Yeah, this is just an annual procedural item, although not only COVID-related, but just technology improvements are allowing us to reduce the amount of cash that we handle in our buildings. Our treasurers still do need to keep some change in the cash box on hand, so I'd just ask that, the amounts that they requested in the memo, that you would approve those for the upcoming school year.
Do you have a motion to approve the cash box for all schools for the 202122 school year?
I have a motion to approve the cash boxes for all schools for the 2122 school year.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Shannon, seconded by Tony. Any questions or discussions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Item eight point ten on the agenda, resolution 21-18, approval for transfer of funds, Mr. Elkins.
So at last month's regular meeting, the board approved the bid for the contractor of the welding room. So this month, I'm asking you to approve and you'll, with the approval of this resolution, we'll accomplish two things. We'll establish a separate local fund for the welding room project, which is always smart to do that type of financing through a local fund and keep it separate from your, from your major funds. And then also the initial transfer from operations to, to cede that local fund for those expenses. So I'd ask for approval of resolution, resolution 18.
Do you have a motion for approval of resolution 18?
I'll make it. Approve resolution 2021-18.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Shannon, seconded by Phil. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Item eight point eleven on the agenda, resolution 2021-19, authorization for sale of real estate, Mr. Elkins.
So at the August 2020 regular session, the board authorized me to engage with a real estate broker and instructed me to pursue sale of the, this property, sixty-seven acres at 100 West and, excuse me, 100 North and 600 West in Greenfield. The resolution before you authorizes me to act on behalf of the board to complete all legal transactions for the sale of that property. So I'd ask the board's consideration and approval for resolution 19 to authorize the sale of said property.
Do you have a motion to approve resolution 2021-19?
I move that we approve, resolution 2021-19.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Chad, seconded by Tony. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Item eight point twelve, resolution 2120, approval for transfer of funds, Mr. Elkins.
So similar procedure to, to resolution 18, but this ties back to the stipends, the both certified and classified that Mr. Smedley presented to you previously. And so again, for practical reasons, we would like to run those transactions through a separate local fund. So from education and operations, the amount listed in the resolution, we will move that to a fund. We'll treat it very much, not very much, exactly the way we do the teacher appreciation grant procedurally. So I'd ask for the board's consideration and approval of resolution 2021-20.
Do you have a motion for approval of 21-20?
I'll go for resolution 2021-20.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Shannon, seconded by Phil. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. All right, we are to item nine on our agenda. I'm going to ask the board, do, we could take a 10-minute break if we feel like we need to at this time. I know we've got several more items to get to or we can power through. You guys tell me what you want to do. Everybody's good?
Okay.
All right. Do I ask the audience? No, I don't. Item nine, yeah. Item nine on the agenda is our public hearing for controlled projects. Mr. Elkins, I need to.
Yep.
Read this next statement.
Your first, your first statement.
To open the, open the. The next item on the agenda for the board is to hold a project and preliminary hearing on the proposed construction project. If you're interested in speaking at the hearing, please make sure you've signed in, the sign is she at the back of the room, which if you haven't, you can. I'm going to include your name, address. After the presentation by the administration and advisors, there'll be an opportunity for the public to make comments about the project. At the hearing, we will ask that each person limit their comments to three minutes and that the topic be limited to the proposed project under consideration. The notice of this preliminary determination hearing was published as legally required on May 7th, 2021 and June 11th in the Greenfield Daily Reporter. The first preliminary determination hearing was held on May 17th, 2021. This time, I'll ask Mr. Elkins, Chief Financial Officer, to explain the purpose of the hearing.
Thank you. Pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-20, or excuse me, -20-3.1, whenever a school corporation proposes to enter into a lease agreement and/or issue bonds for the construction or renovation of a school building or buildings resulting in total costs in excess of certain thresholds, the school corporation is required to hold two public hearings on its preliminary determination to issue such bonds and enter, enter into such lease agreement. This meeting represents the second of such hearings. Notice of both hearings was published in the Greenfield Daily Reporter on May 7th and June 11th. It was also sent via first-class mail and email to the Hancock County Clerk for posting in the courthouse annex. And I would also add, it's been on our corporation website since May 7th as well. We did not have any organizations who requested prior notice, which we would have been legally obligated to provide that if requested. Purpose of the hearing is twofold, to inform the public as to the proposed project and to allow all interested parties, taxpayers and patrons of the school corporation to voice their opinions as to the project and ask any questions. These public hearings and the adoption of resolutions at the very beginning of the legal process, these resolutions will establish the maximum financial terms for the proposed project. At the conclusion of tonight's presentation, the board president will invite members, as she previously stated, from the public if they are interested in commenting. All interested people may give testimony and or ask questions concerning the renovation of and improvements to school facilities throughout the school corporation, which may include the traffic flow and site improvements, relocation and construction of transportation facilities, construction of a new pre-K through fourth grade elementary school, addition of, of addition, addition of instructional space at the current Fortville Elementary, which will become Fortville Intermediate, and facility improvements to be determined at Mount Comfort Elementary. And just let me go off script and add, ad lib just a moment. This will be the fifth time that we have presented this information with very little changes, November, December, January, May and June. So we are definitely at a culminating point in the process.
We know.
Yes, they're very well aware of that. So we are, we are excited to be at the second hearing and, and with the board's consideration and approval, hopefully be able to take some action at the close of this hearing tonight. Mrs. Freeman, I'll turn it briefly back to you.
So we now will hear from Mr. Elkins about the process of determining and communicating the project to the community and the need for the project.
As always, we like to recognize the outstanding professional advisors that are part of our long-range planning team, Terry Lancer, Mark Beebe of Lancer Plus Beebe, architect and design, Eric Long, bond counsel from Ice Miller, from Stiefel, Matt Shoemaker, Luke Brugman and Chad Blacklock, and Chad and Luke and Eric are here and also Misha.
Misha's here.
Misha, good to see you. So we have all of our groups represented. Next slide. There we go. Also from Context Design, Fred and Alyssa Prezo have made significant contributions. And as always, the, the keeper of all things data and tax base and tax revenue related, Mr. Jason O'Neill from Policy Analytics. I think I've got it. Beginning with an August 2019 community-wide presentation, up through the selection of an advisory committee and the fall of 2019 and their subsequent work, onto a community-wide report by Dr. Parker in February of 2020. Tonight is a culmination of months of transparent inclusion of our community and school members in this very lengthy but important process. Key features of this map were reviewed by the advisory committee and approved by the school board in January of 2021, including the construction of a new pre-K through fourth grade elementary building. We already know, due to tracking our enrollment trends, how the pandemic has impacted us. We believe we will not need to have the doors open to the new elementary school until the 2425 school year. And should enrollment slow down any between now and our implementation of this plan, we certainly could and would push back the opening of that elementary. Here's our current grade level configuration with the sixth, seventh and eighth middle school enrollment numbers being highlighted. We're currently at five different school buildings plus the preschool being housed in, in this building. This was the basis or the beginning of the analysis by our community advisory group that led us to identify some red alert numbers, that is beyond capacity. And so that led to the next, the next slide, which is the proposal brought to the community in February of 20 and then used by the school board to approve, or approve us going forward with tonight's plan in January. So the new proposal would be the current, the grade structure you see listed and of course, the key changes there would be K4, which one of those would be a new structure, and now five and six being back to the Fortville Building, which it was originally an intermediate school. So it'll be returning to its original purpose. And this new structure again was recommended by the advisory committee and presented to the public on several occasions prior to this evening. Key components of the project in question would be improvements to the main campus traffic flow, which for any of you that are here at drop-off or dismissal can understand that. Being listed first, relocation of the transportation department, construction of a new bus facility, construction of the new pre-K four elementary building, an additional instructional space at the current Fortville Elementary, which we would hope to move to an intermediate as stated earlier. This is our first distinct project with, yes.
Quick question.
Yes.
Just for clarification, you're calling it Fortville Intermediate? Would it not go back to Mount Vernon Intermediate?
I.
I bet the board, board will get to vote on that and you get to name it.
I, I use Fortville only so the people will know which building I'm referring to at this point, but that would certainly be something that the board would probably want to consider at that time. Again, this, these key components followed the board's instruction to the administrative team to prioritize the most important aspects of our overall future growth plan and long-range needs. I don't know why that's being so stuffy on mine, I apologize. There we go. Additional long-term needs would include demolition of the, of the clinic operations building, which is at the corner here on 234. We also will be in need of additional square footage and renovation of the middle school, additional square footage and renovation at the high school, facility improvements in Mount Comfort Elementary, which will be determined at a later point, and then also current, or upgrades and renovations to this building so it can continue to function in its, in its current capacity. To make that happen, we have an approximate timeline of how those components would be broken down and the 21 to 24 range would be those, what we're calling project, the first project, the 2021 project. You can, you can see that Mount Comfort improvements could be a part of both projects and we're also trying to get most or as much of the main campus circulation taken care of in the first phase, but we could always revisit that as time, money and need allow. The big key piece of all of this future growth plan are these two properties and I mentioned this at last month's meeting, but we are the owners of the property highlighted in orange, formerly known as the Barnhart Property. We are in the very last stages of our due diligence with a tentative closing date of early August. So if all things go through as planned from both parties, we will also be the owner of what is currently listed as the literal property, which is directly to our east. So of course, without these additions, most of what we're talking about tonight would not be possible. The board did vote to use an existing blueprint, footprint, framework, what have you, for a new K4 building. And so our design team of Lancer Beebe designed and, and helped lead the construction on Walnut Grove Elementary, which opened a couple of years ago in the Center Grove District. And so this is the model that we'd be following. Clark Pleasant has also done the same thing, so they've, they've followed the same pattern. This picture in no way is meant to represent any color schemes, any parkings, features or anything like that. It's a basic outline, a basic design idea that, that we have chosen to follow for our Looking at some of the other components, we hope or we think that the transportation center would most likely fit in that northeast corner of the newly acquired property. At least that's what we're looking at now. Certainly as details emerge, as we get further along into this process, we can determine exact locations and more details, but that's kind of the area that we've been eyeballing from the beginning that would be most appropriate for that center to be constructed. As far as the traffic flow and parking, right now, I really just want to focus our attention on what's in purple. We'll also address the yellow, especially as it pertains to Fortville now elementary at some point intermediate. And also the blue, if you can, do I have a pointer on this? Is it the top button? Yes, there it is. So for your, so for your reference, we're in this building. We own this, not yet here, and there's Fortville. So we're going to be focusing on creating access between County Road 200 West and 234. We think, based on the acreage needs for a new elementary school, that somewhere in here with these two properties would be the location of the K4. Transportation would be in the upper corner. We would also focus on this portion of traffic improvement for Fortville and as much of the blue as we could do in this first project to help alleviate the congestion around the middle school, the 234, 200 four-way stop and anything here at the high school that may help alleviate that as well. And certainly, I'm not the traffic expert, but with the analysis and suggestions from the Prezos, we know that this access road would do a lot to alleviate that by being able to divert some traffic away from the four-way stop. So that absolutely is, I think, the key crucial element of any potential traffic improvements that we do in this project. And then, as we've mentioned previously, right now, we're looking at. And then, as we've mentioned previously, right now, we're looking at an additional pod to Fortville or the soon-to-be or at some point intermediate school. And if you can visualize, as growth may continue or will continue, you can see how a similar structure we could have, like a mirror image pod, maybe move to the east or to the right of that as time goes on and demand would call for it. So kind of this modular approach is what Lancer Beebe has been looking at for us as a good next step for Fortville. Looking at estimated costs, just as you take a look at that, I want everyone to be very clear that these are not just kind of thrown-together estimates. These have been vetted by multiple construction management firms and experts, and also with a final say from our design team. I'd also point out that these numbers do include annual inflation factors and also the fact that, at least right now, in this immediate time that we're living in, we know that supply issues for raw materials is a little bit high with some inflation. So feel very confident that all those have been taken into account with these estimations and vetted by the professionals. One thing that we are required to make note of, and that is the operating expenses that we anticipate for new elementary. I actually started working on this in the early fall of 2019. We've continued to update these numbers. They've been included in several long-range finance presentations that we've done at regular intervals for almost two years now. And so you can see from the different funds what we anticipate the starting annual amounts to be in terms of expenditures, not only for staffing, but custodians and utilities and all those good things. And can't leave out food service because we know we have to feed the kids and the staff every day. And with that now, Luke, you want to step up? I will move the slides for you. I'm going to turn it back over for a quick introduction to Mrs. Freeman, if you're still following along there at home.
I'm still following along. We will now hear from Stiefel Nichols &amp; Company Incorporated, our underwriter, about how the proposed project will be financed, as well as information about the effect on the typical property taxpayer.
Good evening. Thank you. The program was being well consistent. You guys well aware of what we serve as bond and director of this corporation. We're asked to talk about how we're going to fund these projects with the potential taxpayer impact of this bond issue to have or to track thereof. For the first thing, we start with anything that we're looking at funding a new project and adding to this corporation's debt obligation is, is a current debt obligation that they already have outstanding. The bus loan pieces is their obligation. In the bar chart there, that's the annual payments that are paid by the corporation regarding the books. The line graph there is probably the most protected debt service, tax rate that you're wanting to apply access on the right hand side. You can see in 2021, that's under a dollar and twenty cents or a dollar and eighty. And then in 2022, 23, and thereafter, there's a big dip, new debt service, new tax rate, which really gives you a very opportunity to borrow for these projects without increasing the tax rate of the taxpayers. So before we get to the bonds that we're talking about, we're talking about the 2021 bonds that were first last year, we're selling and thinking about a month or so, creating a new diligence process this week, which are not yet sold, but I put them on the previous slide. The gray bar up there, that's the outstanding debt that was on the previous page. There's green, there's these projected debt services in the project. There's 2021 corporation, any of these technology projects that was passed last year. Again, if you're following the line graph there, in 2011, you're at a dollar eighteen. In 2022, it's at a dollar eighteen. Again, there's the low-end capacity for these projects. Again, 2023, so on to go for 24. There's 2020 capacity, 24 is the tax rate. So for this project, you saw the numbers that Craig put up on the previous slide, and I'll give a full breakdown of the total cost and all the dollars going here today. So this is roughly how this bond issue would layer on. So we're looking at 84 million two hundred fifty thousand. Just layering on that last graph, the blue here, we're paying, we're paying for the deed. Again, if you're following the red line right there, projected tax rate is still at eighty, that's eighty-one. So projected 22, tax rate is at a dollar eighteen. So this eighty-four million two hundred fifty that we're proposing right now is the maximum setting the resolution, but we're asking to see pass later today. Very likely, we end up splitting this up into a whole series of bonds to save on interest costs and help get into the tax rate. So of that eighty-four million two hundred fifty thousand, seventy-eight million is going to harbor and soften construction costs. About nine hundred thirty-five thousand is going to cost addition. So that's your bond counsel, your underwriter, your trustee, your radiance, your local contractor, your title, all of that stuff that goes in to a bond issue that's a full-size debt. Capitalized interest is five point three million dollars. Really just a fancy way to say we're going to take bond proceeds to pay investors and investors that are due. And to do that, there's one reason, that's just to manage the tax rate, make sure it's not increasing above the dollar eighteen, the debt service rate being coming. So very likely, we're going to get around it, be able to minimize that five point three million dollars. If we get more dollars in the project, fund more is over the borrowing cost, but today, in the resolution, we're asking the maximum, the maximum number of taxes and revenues for the resolution. So to get around that five point three million, that's where we do on anticipation notes. So we're looking at the 21 project, the 2021 project, or issue multiple series of bonds. With the legal parameters on this slide, this is once again, the resolutions that we're asking for tonight, they're just covered up. Or we're looking at the maximum payment is ten million two hundred fifty thousand. That's the annual, the maximum annual payment. That would be a lot of reason to pay by the corporation for these projects. The same ten million two fifty for the maximum, which is very likely, we're not going to issue bonds on this until '22 or even '23. So if we did this project today, it would probably close very early. If you follow along with the markets and all you, you know, everyone says the great horizon, try to be a little bit conservative when putting, you know, the rate of that number a little bit higher than where we'd be today, as many interest expense, forty-one nine, that's the total interest. That would be as we did tomorrow today. We have to push it up to the case of interest rate. Maximum tax rate then impact at eighty-three ninety-two there, that's essentially ten million two fifty, five minus four corporation debt, that's value nine hundred. We have to put that in there. That does not account for any debt obligation rolling off, like you saw on the first couple of slides. New factors in this current debt obligation falling off in future years, restructuring around that, considering that tax rate. That's what we're looking to say with that, the debt impact of the corporation debt service rate is here. That'll stop there and answer any
I just want to interject one thing because Luke referenced it last month and this month again, the holding the debt rate, the dollar eighteen. Yes, we do that to be considerate and transparent and consistent with our taxpayers, but also, as we went through several times in great detail back in the fall budget session, we, at least for the short term, are utilizing the waiver to protected tax cap option. And so that operating balance maneuver that we're using in debt service to be able to fund that, that's hugely important, but because of the rules for that waiver, we're capped at that rate amount. So it's practical, it's the right thing to do, and we also don't have a choice if we want to stay eligible for that. So it's kind of all those three things. That's why we keep saying we want to hold the tax rate, hold the tax rate. So I thought I would just clarify that for everyone this evening.
I don't have any questions.
All right. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you for all your work on this. So yeah, now we're opening for public comments. Do we have anybody, anyone here who would like to speak about this project? Even if you haven't signed in, I can have you sign in. All right. Seeing that nobody is here and nobody's speaking, well, nobody's speaking on this, thank you all who participated in the hearing. We appreciate your time and interest in the project and the future of our community. Please note that this is the final hearing as required by the legal process. The board will continue to work with the administration and its professionals to look for efficiencies, to conserve tax dollars while meeting our educational needs. So with that being said, the public hearing is now closed. So we'll move on with the rest of our board meeting. Item number 10 on our agenda is Resolution 2021... Is that right?
Yes.
Fifteen, Adoption of the 2021 Project Resolution. Mr. Alkins?
The project resolution is required when the school is planning to spend more than one million dollars per building. It contains the estimated hard and soft construction costs and the costs of issuance, and establishes the total maximum for project costs. It also contains the estimated tax impact.
Could I have a motion to adopt the 2021 fifteen, 2021 Project Resolution?
Motion to approve the 2021-15 Project Resolution.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Shannon, seconded by Phil. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Item 11 on the agenda is Resolution 2021-16, Adoption of Preliminary Determination Resolution. Mr. Alkins?
Yes, the Preliminary Determination Resolution is required when a school is planning to finance more than certain thresholds for a project. It contains the total project cost, maximum annual payment and lease term and other financial terms, such as the estimated principal amount and tax impact.
Could I have a motion to approve the 2021-16 Adoption of Preliminary Determination Resolution?
I move to approve Resolution 2021-16 as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Tony, seconded by Shannon. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Item 12 is 2021-17, Adoption of Reimbursement Resolution. Mr. Alkins?
This next and last resolution is a reimbursement resolution relating to the financing of the construction project. It permits the school corporation to reimburse itself from bond proceeds for any cash which it might spend on the project prior to the closing of the bonds. It is required by federal tax law in order to preserve the school corporation's ability to reimburse itself.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2021-17?
A motion that we accept.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved by Phil, seconded by Chad. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Alkins, on all your work on all this. I know we give you a hard time, but we do appreciate it. He can have next month off. Is that what you said?
I keep you entertained.
Yes, you do keep us entertained. Item number 13, Our Announcements. Dr. Parker?
Yes, I'd like to share a great celebration. The district-level administration and board were on a retreat last week, in case someone didn't hear. We had a wonderful time together for two days. You know, when you look back at 2020, we put together a Canvas course where we didn't see each other, but we studied some things and learned a little bit about ourselves and each other and basically engaged virtually. And that was what it was. But we were able to get together for two days, and we were so happy to be able to do that and learn and grow together. It really is a delightful team to work with. For those of you in the community that were not at the retreat, I want you to know that you have a great team of very impassioned leaders working to serve the students and staff of Mount Vernon schools. But of course, we did some Dean Building things. We had some legal updates by our legal counsel, Amy Matthews. We did study diversity a bit with Dr. Renee Aziz. We discussed our system for all students learning at high levels. Mr. Shipley led a great deal of that. I pitched in and supported him a bit. We talked about our future strategic planning process and what that architecture might look like and a process may look like and the vocabulary as we move into the fall and advance that. We had a great hike in the Cicada Field Brown County State Park on early Tuesday morning, focusing on leadership reflections, but also discussing self-care and how we can make sure to be in the best place we can to meet the needs of our school district as leaders. Talked about Big Rocks and what the priorities were, as well as professional learning communities, which are, it's our intensive process, excuse me, to ensure that all students learn at high levels, focusing on results and learning and collaboration. We did spend some time. We brought in a consultant, Nikki Privet, to share with us all the opportunities that we can use Edmentum, the Edmentum suite for with our students. And then we also brought in Sam Fritz to help provide an overview of the new art and science of teaching. And all of our faculty will be able to receive a handbook next year, just to use as a reference. If they have questions about, gosh, what can I do differently to engage students or primary instruction, they have that book. It's very easy to use. It's not something you read from first to last page. It's really just a reference book. So we're excited about our future work with that, even though it's invitational at this point, but to continue to support all of the students and staff in our district. And then the other thing I want to share is just, you know, a great celebration for the summer. We're hoping that our social distancing is changed at the end of this month. Right now, the governor order goes through June the 30th, but I would like to remind everybody that the board passed a plan in May that if we don't have to, if we're not required, we will not be wearing masks next year, only on an incredibly rare potential, possible situation where the absence rates due to illness would climb very, very high. And we put some messaging out about that last week. If you would like that messaging again, or if you didn't get it, reach out directly to me. I'd be happy to share that with you. As well as, we don't know what contact tracing is going to be like next year. It's not our choice. If we don't have to do it, we won't. If we have to do it, we will. It's only because we're required to do it. And we would love to be out of the contact trace investigation business, but things are looking up. Let's keep our fingers crossed. All the great things we learned from the pandemic, let's continue to move those forward and have safe and healthy learning experiences for all of our students and staff. And I know that was a bit long for me, and I hope you'll appreciate that I really did try to talk quickly. Thank you.
That's okay. Thank you. The last item on our agenda is adjournment. I need a, if I could have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Do I have a, do I have a second?
Yes.
I'll second.
That was very enthusiastic, Phil.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of adjourning, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Meeting is adjourned at 8:49 PM. Thank you, everybody.